Doug.
Doug Carman, District Two.
Tile.
Tile Zuhuski at large.
Jim.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Eric.
Eric Casino, District Two.
Ed. Oops, you're muted.
District Two.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Hey, any changes? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries of meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand twenty and accept the audio as the official record?
So move.
Second.
We had an October tw- two thousand.
I think he meant August.
I guess. Sorry, yeah.
I didn't make that many.
Um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor accepting the minutes from August nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and or approving the minutes from August nineteenth, two thousand twenty and accepting the audio as the official record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the September second, two thousand twenty meetings and accept the audio as the official record?
So move.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes from September second, two thousand twenty and accepting the audio as the official record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public communications. We have one attendee who does not have their hand up. Do you wish to speak? So go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing a hand go up, so let's move right into our work session on the capital improvement program.
Thank you Chair Nelson, Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager, and this is an annual work session you receive on updates to what's known as our capital improvement program, sometimes referred to as the capital facilities plan, but I'm going to open up my presentation in a second, walk you through how those aren't necessarily exactly the same thing. But we do have a quite a few guests tonight, including the Director of Public Works, Jennifer Walker, whose name I see, and other public works staff who manage the various departments and also our central services manager who will be talking. Well, they were they're available to help answer questions. I'm going to bring up a PowerPoint presentation about the capital improvement plan update, walk you through it, and then for questions at the end, we can call on those appropriate staff members to help field those questions because I am not an expert in this field. I am a facilitator of this update. So I'm going to share my screen. Let's one moment, please. Put it in slideshow mode. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So this is just what I told you, the capital improvement plan annual update. It involves three different departments of Thurston County to pull this all together. CPAD, who of course I work for, Community Planning and Economic Development, Central Services, which is basically manages all our county facilities, county buildings, county facilities, and Public Works, which has kind of the lion's share of what we include in the capital improvement program. You received a draft in your email packet, and I think if it was mailed out, you'll have a hard copy, and it basically is a repeal and a replace of last year's capital improvement program. Too many things change in all of the tables from year to year to do a redline version. That's basically impossible. But the last year's version is posted online still for any comparisons. And if you have questions about what's changed from year to year, I know staff can be able to answer those. So just a little bit of context. So capital facilities planning is the theme here, but what we're updating is the capital improvement plan. And how this works is that the Growth Management Act requires us to maintain a capital facilities element in our comprehensive plan. That element has to include a list of all the public facilities that we need to support development and future growth in our community, policies for ensuring that we're coordinating that known coming growth with the levels of service that we need to provide for our roads and for our wastewater treatment and for our parks. As you'll remember, the levels of service for parks was updated earlier this year. You passed a recommendation on that, and those policies and levels of service lie within the main chapters of the comprehensive plan. The capital improvement program is a very important element of overall capital facilities planning. It's Appendix G of the comprehensive plan, so we process it like a comprehensive plan amendment, but we do it as a standalone change, which we're allowed to do under the Growth Management Act, because it's very closely tied to our budget process. It's a six-year financing plan showing the funding sources and the expected costs of each capital facility that the county expects to build, maintain, fix over the next six years. So that's what the CIP is all about. As I mentioned before, it takes a lot of folks to make to make this happen every year. It's quite a lift. CPAD, and this year it's me, coordinates this effort because it is a comprehensive plan amendment, so we make sure it goes through all the proper steps of a comprehensive plan amendment. The Budget Office actually is very closely connected as well because the numbers in the budget need to match the numbers in the planned revenues and expenditures moving forward. School, fire districts, PUDs, other special purpose districts do their own capital facilities planning through the year and then provide that information to us, which we report out in our plan. That's actually a requirement under GMA, but it's we don't get directly involved with those locally adopted CFPs. We just take the information and make sure it's communicated and provide the transparency and public process to do that. And then the lion's share of what's in the CIP comes out of our Public Works Department and our Facilities Management, who, and that's all the tables you see in the draft, who actually prioritize, choose projects, calculate the costs, and figure out what's next over the next six years. This has a lot of eyes on it before it ever gets to the Planning Commission, including the Board of County Commissioners. This is a unique one in that we actually have a briefing with the board. We had one July twenty ninth where we go over, it was virtually an all-day briefing, where we go over each and every capital facility, much like you're getting kind of the briefer version of that tonight. They're going to do a bit more detail because it connects with their budget. Also, the individual departments have public outreach and separate advisory committees and a whole bunch of other eyes on these projects that help them basically before they can make it into this plan, they have gone through a lot of public work. So what am I even talking about? What's a capital facility? I think you probably know what this is, but each jurisdiction sort of defines what facilities they put in their capital facilities plan. Thresholds can be set for the size or life of the projects that need to be communicated in the plan, the what phases of the project want that are listed. But one thing is certain is that projects that use real estate excise tax funds, REIT funds, or use impact fees, they must be listed in the capital facilities element. And the county does collect, excuse me, impact fees from developers for parks and for transportation, and then we collect and pass through fees for school districts who've decided to take on impact fees to help fund their projects, and some fire districts. I think just one fire district right now. And all of those are those facilities have to appear in the plan in order to qualify to use those public funds. So here's the list of the type of facilities we're talking about: transportation, water, sewer, solid waste, parks, buildings, and then of course, schools and other special purpose district facilities. So this Appendix G capital improvement plan, like I said, sorry, program, looks ahead six years and it's updated more frequently than the rest of the comprehensive plan. Needs to be consistent with the budget, as I've said before. So the future schedule after tonight looks like this. Tonight's your briefing on it. I'm going to be asking you to set a public hearing for a very specific date, October twenty first. Usually, I am not suggesting that we set a hearing right away and have to make this certain date, but I need to for this one because in order to maintain this schedule and to allow for the board to adopt this by the end of the year with their budget, the timing is a little bit tighter on this one. So I'll be asking you to set the public hearing for October twenty first. And then if there are questions tonight that don't get answered, I could still bring those back to you in the interim, October seventh meeting, just so you're comfortable as you're moving into the public hearing. Did you have a question, Ed?
No.
Oh, okay. Thought I heard your voice. All right, I'm going to run through this. Parks and Trails projects are the first thing I'm going to highlight, and actually it's Carrie Hibden, the Parks Director, who's here tonight to answer questions. So Parks and Trails projects really are focused on required infrastructure repairs for for safety, to add capacity to our existing facilities, reduce maintenance costs. I know our folks work hard to design projects that are actually save the county money and save the public money down the line. They're selected again based upon system needs, citizen input, funding availability, and the judgment of the professional parks planners. So this total six-year cost for the Parks and Trails projects that are reflected in this plan, and each project is also has its own little page detailing what it's all about in the draft you have received. Total cost over six years is four point four six million. The funds are from those two sources I was talking about before, the real estate excise tax and park impact fees. Major projects coming up I've listed here. Trestle repaired a Deschutes River substructure, excuse me, Kennedale Park Lodge renovation, trail improvements, and restroom improvements, and other Parks and Trails improvements, and the full list is in your draft. And we can have questions at the end, or if you want to just, I don't I don't know how you want to do it. I think I'd probably rather myself run through all of this and then you can ask about it. And when you ask, you can say this is about a parks project, and then we'll know who should answer. Next is solid waste projects. I have these ordered in the order they appear in your draft if you're flipping through and following along. Karen Leece is here to help answer those questions. And solid waste projects, as you can imagine, there's a I need to make sure that these facilities, which handle a lot of waste from various sources, are safe and are processing things efficiently and reliably. And so those, that's the nature of those projects. There are also legal and regulatory requirements and operational requirements that need to be met with these projects. A sampling of the upcoming major projects are the Wasterecovery Center, the WARC, which is the landfill in Hawks Prairie, improvements and upgrades, upgrades to the Rochester Dropbox facility and the Rainier Dropbox facility. Those are important, and I know those have been the subject of additional work and public input. Total six-year cost is twenty-four million for these improvements and upgrades, and the funding source are solid waste tipping fees and charges. Next category of facilities is stormwater, stormwater utility projects, and Tim Wilson, the Water Resources Division Manager, is here to talk about those if not if needed tonight. And stormwater utility projects are really all about reducing hazards, flooding hazards, and improving water quality in Thurston County. So these projects are prioritized and selected to meet state and federal requirements, and that we have a Storm and Surface Water Advisory Board, which much like the Planning Commission, is made up of volunteers, citizens from the community, and they have a big hand in looking at these projects and helping prioritize projects for the CIP. Some highlights of major projects. Always doing improvements to neighborhood stormwater infrastructure to make sure those ponds and ditches and swales are operating as they should. There's there's also projects to make improvements to Boston Harbor Road, a stormwater conveyance system and outfall, and then several projects related to reducing flooding threat to roads and neighborhoods and repairing outfalls, and the total cost is eight point seven million and change over six years, and that's funded from stormwater utility rates. Transportation, and Scott Lindblom, the County Engineer, is here to help us with this one. This is the biggest bite of the apple in terms of the number of projects and the and the costs. As you can imagine, it's quite a road system we have in Thurston County, and we're always having to make improvements for safety, reliable transportation, capacity, making sure that we're meeting state and federal requirements. So the types of projects, pedestrian safety improvements, roundabouts, which everyone I think loves by now, right? And knows exactly how to navigate perfectly. Road capacity, safety improvements, fish barrier removals, and fish passage projects are also on this list, and collecting safety data, so we know where to focus our efforts in the future to improve safety. These projects, you were provided a link to be able to review these projects because they are not detailed. They don't have their own page descriptor in Appendix G. Instead, Appendix G refers to another document, which is the Transportation Improvement Plan, which is the tip, which actually contains all of the information on all of the projects that are summarized in the CIP. We have a CIP and a TIP. That tip goes through its own approval process with the Board of County Commissioners at separate public hearing. It does not come before the Planning Commission. That's happening now. It happens on a parallel level, and so at the end of the day, the numbers that are up here in terms of costs may be adjusted depending on if the tip is adjusted. By the time it's all adopted together, everything will line up. But right now, the six-year cost is estimated to be over eighty-nine million dollars. So the funding sources are vast and many. There are, of course, the County Roads Fund, and then funds from federal, state programs, grant programs, bridge programs, specialized programs like Safe Routes to School, Recreation and Conservation Office grants for fish barrier removal projects. So the list is long, and it has a pretty diverse set of funds, or a very diverse set of projects.
Hey, Jennifer.
Oh, I have a quick question.
Hi, Raoul. Yeah.
Hey. Do you have a spreadsheet that shows where all the money comes from and to each particular year?
So all of the tables, the Appendix G, the draft that was circulated, each table shows the source of the fund, at least the name of it, and what it's funding. Yeah, that's actually part of why we do the CIP, is that public transparency, where the money's coming from, how it's going to be spent.
I'm suffering from bandwidth issues.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. That's fine.
Great.
I'll I'll find it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it should be in what you're emailed. Scott's holding it up helpfully. It's dense. It's a hundred and some odd pages. It has more detail than you will ever want.
Okay, I think it's actually coming through right now. Finally get him there. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Next, I'm going to go over really quickly water and sewer utility projects. Again, Tim Wilson is here to answer questions about this. So this is all about our drinking water and our sewer treatment. As you know, the county does manage water systems and sewage systems in different areas of the county, and those need upgrades and those need maintenance. And so that's what these facilities are all about, including upcoming major projects to upgrade the Grand Mound system in the Grand Mound Urban Growth Area, which is really important for growth and economic development down there, water treatment and wastewater handling capacity, Boston Harbor wastewater plant upgrades, Tam O Shan plant water upgrades, and then their asset management program. So the six-year cost is eleven point six million, and the funding source again is from the stormwater utility rates. And then county facilities last, well, it's not quite last, but second to last, Jason Ash is here. He's a facility supervisor to help us with any questions about these. So again, these are facilities that are owned, managed, run by the county, including the courthouse, but not limited to the courthouse. There's a list of all the facilities in there, and it's quite extensive in the draft Appendix G that you're provided. So again, these are all designed around kind of maintaining a safe and sustainable facilities for employees and for the public that come and visit us to do their business. Selected, these projects selected for for those reasons. Safety, health, accessibility is a big one, sustainability, just like when your house has something broken, you got to fix it. That's what this is all about. This is the county's house. Upcoming major projects include courthouse infrastructure upgrades to just maintain the safety of what we have and continue to work with there at the courthouse. There are many other county building repairs and safety improvement projects that are detailed in the CIP, a couple of jail expansions to make sure we're maintaining capacity there. Six-year cost is a hundred and seven million. Again, if you do a house project, you know they cost a lot of money. Sources of funding are future bonds, that real estate excise tax, central service, Building Reserve Fund, Trial Court Improvement Fund, Grant, and the Roads Fund grants, and also the Road Fund. So, next, last but not least, but kind of least, because we don't have a lot of control over these, is facilities of other entities, like I talked about, schools, fire districts, PUD, intercity transit, et cetera. We provide those as required under the GMA. It's information only. It's important to provide those though, because especially some of the school districts do collect impact fees, so it's important for our citizens to understand what those impact fees are funding. They can also get that information directly from the school and the other districts. There are some late-breaking amendments. I think the day after I sent the draft out to you for review, Olympia and Tumwater School Districts contacted me with new information, updated tables. So what you'll see in the public hearing draft is a little a little bit of a, just some different numbers and different projects in Olympia and Tumwater School Districts, and there could be others. Everyone's kind of doing their CFP work right now in the fall, and so we try to just bring it all together at once the best we can at the end of the year, so. Questions? I think I'll stop sharing my screen so that you can all see each other, but now's the time for your questions, and I have the staff here to help answer.
I've got a question, Jennifer, and just you mentioned the the trend, the tip part of the capital plan is not come through the Planning Commission. Is the capital improvement plan running, is that run through the Planning Commission? Is that a requirement of the GMA that it runs through us? Because it seems so much to me every year, it's really a capital budget issue, not a land use planning issue.
Yeah, we've we've continued to have those discussions internally, but I think what we found is because it's an appendix to our comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan and any amendments to it must go through the Planning Commission. So as long as that the that's the way we're doing it, then yes, we have to bring it to you. And I know it's kind of a lot of information that you're maybe not as closely linked to, but it is a process step that we do, and allows the public another chance to kind of learn about the county projects plan for the next six years and provide what input they want to.
Yeah, interesting, okay. Which is a good thing. I'll continue the growth in the scope of the COP plan. We, I mean, I've, we've run into this in a couple of other areas as well, so.
Yeah, the the CIP as Appendix G was maybe a change made a few years ago. I don't you don't look quite, I think I was on the Planning Commission, but of course I have no recollection. But basically, the policies, the levels of service, all the other parts of the capital facilities element required under GMA also live in the COP plan, just spread out in different chapters. We have the utilities chapter, we have a parks, basically, chapter. And so this is a financing plan that sort of needs to be also put out there under the GMA requirements. So it's kind of carved off and treated a little differently, so we can take it through with the budget, if that makes sense.
Good, thanks.
Jennifer, I'm more familiar with residential construction, but one of the things that hit me in here, and I'll show my ignorance. It's like the Buford Park restroom upgrade, one point one million dollars to build a restroom. It just seems, wow. I mean, it's looked, I mean, depending on the size, that's like seven hundred dollars a square foot. I mean, what kind of toilets are they putting in there? I mean, it's kind of a rhetorical question. I don't expect an answer because they've got bids and whatnot, but it's just shocking to an individual to see that what some of these things cost. But the other thing is just a clerical thing.
Okay.
It's on page one oh seven, which is the Carpenter Road Transition Center.
Okay.
Development. They got the wrong map there. I don't know whether it makes any difference, but.
Definitely, we'll have that corrected. There's also a missing map in one of the sections. I put a note in there noting that. Those will all be fixed before the public hearing. So yeah, if you have any other of those kind of clerical errors to fix, now's the time to point those out.
Jennifer, I had something that was kind of tangential and probably, you know, we're way past this, but and and I know that you guys went through this before my involvement with the Planning Commission, but when we were when we were considering levels of service for parks, where can we have some influence in trying to get some playground facilities down in South County?
Yeah, I'm going to turn that over to Carrie Hibden, if he's available to to try to answer that question. Carrie, are you are you there?
Yeah, you bet. Can you hear me? Okay, well, y- yes, we've heard a lot that people want different types of recreational facilities in the South County and Rochester Grand Bound area. And so what you could do to help, I guess, would be talk to your county commissioners and just implore to them that you feel like these kind of facilities are needed in that part of the county. One of our goals is to spread our services around through the county and provide facilities throughout the county. And so if you feel there's an area, a district that needs parks and rec facilities, talk to the county commissioners and hope that that influences that.
Carrie, you guys, you don't really have a whole, the county on the whole doesn't have a whole lot of playground facilities, is kind of when I'm.
We we have them at our developed parks, so we have them at four different locations throughout the county. Then we have two playground sets at Kennedale. It really depends on the type of facility, so please do understand that some of the county facilities are what's known as passive use facilities. And so you just go out there to enjoy nature. What we do with Thurston County is, I think, very successfully blend active and passive use together. And so what that means might be a Burford or a Kennedale Park where you're there predominantly to enjoy either the the beach or the forest or just the the quiet and and nature. So you're there for the facility itself, but realizing that, you know, people have children and they might not appreciate that as much, or want to do different activities, we put a playground in and we try to make it work in concert with the whole park.
Do you you have a passive facility in the South County now that would be easier to can to add playground facilities at than maybe having to start from scratch?
You know, there's been some discussion and some grant money being afforded to the Rochester School District and Haas Field to do some improvements, and one of the purchases they chose to make was a playground. So I can't speak to the timeframes with that, or as to the project list that Haas Field or Rochester would choose to do, but the county did make some money available for them. As far as Thurston County with facilities, we have our Yelm-Tinino Trail, which goes through Yelm, Rainier, Tinino, and then we end up in the Tinino Park, for example, and they have playground facilities there, which we share as a trailhead. So we try to spread those around, but yes, as our capital facilities plan shows, we need more and need to continue to improve.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jennifer, this is Jennifer Walker, the Public Works Director. Carrie, can you speak a little bit to the strategies that we've put in place as a result of a lack of funding for maintenance and operations? Because I think that plays a a key role in the projects that we are selecting and or are not selecting.
Absolutely. And what we're talking about here is we really put our heads together and said, we're having trouble finding adequate maintenance and operations or MNO money, but we have some capital dollars. So what So what can we do to improve our park system, improve capacity and just provide a better experience without increasing maintenance and potentially reducing some maintenance? So we really put a lot of thought to this. And some of the restroom replacement projects is a good example. To get to the cost of those, yes, those are expensive. However, the 1.1 million dollars you're seeing there is to replace a restroom and potentially to add one. And so we got costs for both. So one restroom wouldn't cost 1.1, but let's, let's start with about half of that maybe is really where we are. So, but a good example is the restrooms. Yes, we would put in a new restroom. It would replace two of our restrooms that are aging. They're almost 50 years old, believe it or not, five zero. And they're difficult to clean. They have homeowner fixtures and so forth. New restrooms come with good fixtures, easy to clean, easy to keep maintained. They have LED lights that go on and off. The list goes on and on. So they're cheaper and more effective for us to maintain. And that's really the strategy through the Parks and Trails Program right now is what can we do to enhance our system, yet not negatively influence MNO?
Any other questions from the planning commission on aspects of this document?
I just had one question with regards to the courthouse upgrade. I know at one point they were looking at a new location based on the read here. It does look like they're planning to continue to use the same space and then upgrade it. And it does represent a fairly large component of the budget. Just curious on what the plan was.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, at this time, our plan is to try to bring the current facility up to current codes and standards. We're not looking at, given the COVID hitting, we're not looking at trying to go back out for a new courthouse. So we're essentially looking at what, what we're calling Plan B, which is upgrading the current facility to meet needs.
Sure. Thank you.
How, how long will that upgrade of the courthouse then push out the, the need to build a new courthouse?
At this time, we're looking at just replacing the current systems, which would give us, basically we're assuming another 10 to 12 years of lifespan. And then at that time, we would have to reevaluate to see how the county's growing and what needs need to be met. So it's not a long-term fix. It's more of a short-term fix.
Okay, thanks.
Hello there, this is Raul. And I'm again referring to the transportation section, page 65, the table. I have a question, once you get there, let me know.
Okay. I don't have it pulled up, but I can.
Like for example, in the Washington State DLT funding for 2021, we have $300,000. Then for the following years, we have zero coming in from that. And there's a bunch of zeros in quite a few of the years, first of all, some of the funding remains somewhat constant. Why the zeros? Is this something with the budget or is it a five-year process or what?
Yeah, perhaps I can speak to that. This is Scott Lindman, the county engineer. That $300,000 represents a one-time investment for a particular project, and that is the US 12, it's related to the US 12 and Sergeant, excuse me, US 12 and Anderson Road Roundabout down in the Grand Mound area, Rochester area. So initially, I'm going to take you back just a couple of years. The DOT was planning on constructing two roundabouts, one at the intersection of US 12 and Anderson Road, and a second one at the intersection of US 12 and Moon Road. Each of these would cost, you know, in round numbers, about 1.5 million dollars. So during the planning and outreach part of that, in conjunction with the DOT, Thurston County and the Chehalis Tribe, there were some community meetings and an idea spraying up that if the 188, 188th Avenue, which is a county road that accesses the casino, if that road were closed, the traffic patterns down in that area would really negate the need for the DOT to build a roundabout at US 12 and Moon Road. So we, we did some studying in that area and found that that actually would be a great success. It would reduce some of the burden on the county roads, create quite a bit safer US 12 corridor, and it would in the end save washed out about 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars because they would not need that roundabout. So in coordination with the DOT and tribe and the community, we just went to the board recently to discuss closing a portion of 188. In doing so, the DOT then would agree to fund that design and construction of that closure. So it's, it's rather tough to show without a map in front of me, so I do apologize for that. But in the end, it's, the DOT is funding one particular project, so it's not necessarily a long-term funding program.
No, I was going to get more concerned about, okay, is there something going south on us or is it, okay, that's, that's fine. Also, I have another question. We don't get any funding from fuel tax?
From, I'm sorry, what tax?
We don't have any funding from fuel tax for the transportation department?
I'm sorry, I still didn't.
Gas tax.
Oh, get, yes, we do get gas tax money. So most of our money for the transportation system comes from the road levy, the property tax, as well as the, the county's portion of the state gas tax. So we get a small portion of that gas tax. A lot of our other money comes from grants. So typically our capital program is funded, I would say, you know, 60 to 90% of a typical project is funded by grants. Those grants typically come indirectly through gas tax through the state or federal government. So we do get a, we do get quite a bit of money from the gas tax.
Okay, but isn't that, is renamed after, it's not located in a particular grant. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for any of our other?
I have one more, Jennifer, if that's okay. And I think this one might be best directed towards Tim Wilson. When we're looking at the money that we're spending on county-owned water and sewer systems, and specifically when we're looking at places like Tam O Shan, Beverly Beach, and out at Boston Harbor, does it seem like the rest of the utility consistently? I, I know that over time, we expect that everybody, you don't spend an equal amount of dollars on everybody every year. And over time, you think it's, you would expect it to be kind of a wash. But when we look at these places like, like Beverly Beach and Tam O Shan and Boston Harbor, and maybe even Tango Wild, I don't know. Does it feel like we're, the rest of the utility is consistently subsidizing those areas? And those are, you know, big money pits that we should probably think of other ways on how to finance?
So Eric, good, good question. And just a clarification to, before we begin, slide 22, and I had ample opportunity to review this, but it does say that these utilities are funded by stormwater fees, they're actually funded by the individual water and sewer fees for those utilities. To get, to get to your question, it, it, for Grand Mound, for the Grand Mound utility, water and sewer utility, the projects are driven more by capacity and, and growth for that utility, whereas Tam O Shan and, and Boston Harbor, the projects there are more driven by aging utility, aging infrastructure within the utilities and trying to bring things up to speed. And in some cases, such as Tam O Shan, some ongoing water quality issues that we've had out there and just trying to address those to, to make sure we're delivering good potable, a good potable water supply.
So you don't think it, i- is it not fair to say that, or are they fully being funded by user fees then out at Tam O Shan and, and Beverly Beach and Boston Harbor? Or does the utility subsidize those at all at a rate higher than they, they do anywhere else?
When, when you say the utility, and Karen can chime in here, but the, there's individual funds for each of these utilities. So, so while we are in the process of looking at some efficiencies and maybe exploring consolidation of all the utilities, we're not, we're not quite there yet. So all of these are funded independently from their, from their own funding sources via, via rates. There is some exception to that in that we have requested refunding for some of these projects in the past and, and are doing that in the future as well. There's been refunding approved for some of these. But there's no, if you're asking if one utility subsidizes another, if I understand that correctly, that, that's not occurring at this point.
Okay.
So this, yeah, this is Karen, Karen Lee. So Tim's absolutely right. So at the current time, Boston Harbor rates pay for Boston Harbor infrastructure and capital needs. Tam O Shan rates fund Tam O Shan infrastructure and capital needs. So there's not any, there's no subsidizing of that at the current time. They each have their own fund with their own rate structure.
Thank you.
Any final questions? We're kind of up on our agenda time, but I want to make sure folks get questions answered because the next step I will be asking you to set a public hearing. I guess hearing none. I just want to thank all of our guests tonight from Public Works and Facilities for helping answer those questions. And if more come up, I'm sure we can pass them to you. So thanks again for being here. I'll kick it over to Scott to take us to the next piece, which is setting that hearing. Waiting for Scott. Chair Nelson, are you ready to move forward?
Sorry, I had the wrong button pushed. So would somebody like to make a motion to set a public hearing for October 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM for the capital improvement program, 2021 through 2026?
The move.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of setting a public hearing for 7:00 PM on October 21st, 2020, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So special use code amendments.
Thank you. I'm going to quickly be able to turn this over to Andrew Bond and Caitlin Nelson, who are teamed up to bring these code amendments to you. I do want to point out, they'll probably point this out, but we're kind of excited to have the opportunity to realize that we had three different items on the docket. They're all high priorities of the board. And they all involve amending the same section of the zoning code, the special use chapter and table. So it made the most sense to process them together. They are three separate proposals though, and can be treated as such, but we're going to take them through the process together since it's the same pages of the code and sections of the code that they affect. And they're also sort of linked, if you think about it, in terms of they all really are dealing with adding opportunities in the rural area for doing some new economic activity. So that's another way to think about these. So I'm going to turn it over. I don't know if Andrew or Caitlin, you're going first, but the floor is yours.
Let me share the screen. So more or less how this is going to kind of work out is Caitlin is going to present the first portion, which is daycare facilities, and then I will jump in and do smoke houses and resorts and retreats.
Okay. Hello, I'm Caitlin Nelson. I'm an associate planner. This is the childcare facilities code amendment, which is on the 2020 official docket. And like Jennifer mentioned, a high priority for the board. Childcare facilities consist of two different types of uses that are allowed in Title 20. One is daycare centers, which are a commercial facility, and family daycare providers, which are within residential homes where the owner resides. Language was clarified for the state code around family daycare providers, that they must be allowed as a use anywhere that a single-family home is allowed. That is unless it would create an incompatible use, and that would be determined during the review of the special use permit, which is what is proposed for these allowances. Next slide. Commercial daycare centers are currently allowed in most residential zones in the county, but they're only allowed in one commercial zone. The optional commercial zones to expand into are rural commercial center, arterial commercial, and highway commercial. These are proposed as administrative special use permits because that is consistent with other commercial uses in commercial zones. For family daycare providers, the only zones that allow single-family residences without also allowing family daycare providers at the moment are these three listed here for the Nisqually Agricultural District, the Long Term Agriculture District, and the Long Term Forestry District. Next slide. For commercial daycare centers, some changes to the code that are being suggested by staff are mostly changes to remove the requirements to, well, okay, to start, one suggestion is to remove the requirements to provide traffic estimates. This is a suggestion from the Public Works Department because they have their own requirements for that, and having it here is redundant and could create inconsistent code. The other two changes for this use are to remove the identified requirements and just reference the applicable code section, the way that other uses do. For family daycare providers, we are suggesting changes to include the correct reference for signage, first of all, and then also to adjust language for the hours of operation. The current language is vague and has not been needed during permit review, so it seemed unnecessary. And then also change the reference to other items that are predominantly covered in another chapter as listed below. And that's it for this one. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. We can always answer questions at the end too, so. Let's jump on. So mine is a little bit different. The, I'm sorry. So the resorts and retreats and the smoke houses are citizen request, and part of their applications for both projects, they included sample code. And so kind of what I'll be doing is going through that sample code and then more or less trying to gauge a direction that the planning commission would like me to move, either amending some of their code, adding additional things, or eliminating certain things. So let's just start right out. The Resorts and Retreats was a project that was on the 2021 development code docket. It is a request from the Cascade Camp and Conference Center. And a quote from their application more or less states that this proposal represents an opportunity to establish standards that will enable such facilities to offer a full range of standard services while also eliminating the non-conforming statuses of all resorts and retreat facilities in Thurston County that already exceed the current threshold. Part of their proposal is creating two subsections under resorts and retreats in the special use chapter. The first will be for resorts and retreats that are less than 100 acres, and all of the existing regulations that currently exist would continue to apply. But the new addition would be resorts and retreat facilities over. But the new addition would be resorts and retreat facilities over 100 acres. And with that, they would begin to, they would allow a certain size. So 100,000 square feet of building, building area. You, you could have a 100,000 square feet of building area for 100 acres. And then beyond that, if your property was larger, for every 100 acres, a parcel area and additional 10,000 square feet of buildable, buildable area is allowed. A maximum of 200,000 square feet. No building. No, sorry, buildable area, no building is allowed to be larger than 35,000 square feet. And the minimum setback is 100 feet for structures and parking adjacent to residential properties. Jump into smoke houses. Again, this is on the 2021 Development Code Docket. It is a request from local planning solutions. And just a little backstory. The original Johnson Smokehouse was constructed in 1983, but was destroyed in 2019 by a fire. The prior facility was 12,000 square feet and approximately had 20 or so employees. And they are currently rebuilding, but under the home-based business, which has a limit on the size. Currently Title 20 does not permit commercial smoke houses. So this would be a completely new section under the special use chapter. And just a little background on the home-based business, it is restricted to 4,000 square feet and no more than two employees. Part of the amendment is also adding a definition for smoke houses. And so we would refer to it as smokehouse commercial. And it would be a wholesale facility that flavors, browns, cooks or preserves cured meat products by exposing them to smoke from burning or smoldering materials, usually wood. They are proposing that we allow the commercial smoke houses in R1 to 20, R1 to 10, RR1 to 5, RR1 to 5, and UR1 to 5. Part of their proposal also includes standards for smoke houses. They establish a minimum lot size of two acres, a maximum building size of 8,000 square feet, no more than 16 employees. The hard surface maximum is 85%. Open space is 15%. They must follow the landscaping standards in chapter 2045. The parking requirement would be based on a warehouse and wholesale use, which is one space for 2,000 square feet. No off-site signage, no onsite sales, no outside storage unless screened or fenced from adjacent street or property. And single family residential is permitted as a secondary use. Here are the link for the project pages. The pages have a little background, some of the attachments and a public participa-, public comment participation option. And that is the remaining portion of my presentation.
And where are those links? You just showed where they located?
Each project has a special page. The only one that is kind of still being sorted out is the childcare facilities that we had a little delay with IT. So that one should be finished, no more. It should be done by tomorrow. So that is still to come, but it, the page bones are there. And I did activate the public comment option. So that is an option as well.
And those are available. This presentation, like all our PowerPoints are posted on the website through the planning commission page. So if people want to go there to find these links, or they can get there by a shortcut, thurstonplanning.org. And then look for the Development Code Docket, and that links you to those project pages.
Hi, this is Raoul. I have a question on page eight. Where you mentioned section I, no onsite sales are permitted. I can understand some of the logic behind that, but a smokehouse would be such a facility that usually you have a sample of your product and you sell a little bit so people can taste it. And they know what they want to order.
So this sorry, sorry to interrupt. The, this is what the applicants actually proposed. So they are actually restricting themselves by not allowing sales. If the planning commission wishes to maybe allow that for any potential future commercial smoke houses, that could be an option where we amend that section so that we have, I can bring that forward for the next meeting, if you guys wish to move in that direction. I see it not.
A smokehouse in Thurston County has sales on sites. And they used to sales inside as well. Now they want to restrict themselves. I wonder why.
Well, it wouldn't be restricting all of them. I mean, but this is in residential neighborhoods, right?
Yes.
Andrew, was there, was there any rationale behind limiting the size to 8,000 square feet and 16 employees? Because that sounds like it's even smaller than what they had before the fire.
So they more or less with their proposal kind of detailed their applications on the, the project pages website. They don't really go into specifics as to why that size. They must see it as, they don't, they don't really specify. So more or less, I would imagine that it would be something where they don't see their business expanding. We could always.
I don't see the need for the limitation myself.
Okay. And we can go ahead for the next meeting, if everyone is in agreeance, to remove the restriction on how many employees.
Back on the resorts and retreats part, you know, I read that letter from, from Christie White. She made a pretty good point about how there's, if you have a 100 acre resort retreat facility having only 100 foot setback from buildings. That seems a little bit tight. People pushing up against the lines a little tight. If, and she made the suggestion that we should push it back to 500 feet. I don't know if 500 feet is, is reasonable either, but is there, is there any middle ground we can have there? Or is there anything we could do like, you know, if they put up a fence, they can have their, or they put up a, you know, a fence you can't see through, they can put a parking lot closer to a lot line or something.
And that, so if, at the direction of the planning commission, if we would like to look into that, I can put together some options of language to say, if you don't wish to put up a fence or screen the parking lot from the adjacent property, your setback is 500 feet. If you do go ahead and screen it, your setback is 100 feet or any variation of that number. I can do that for the next meeting and I can submit that with a memo.
That'd be awesome.
On that one, I know that that request, I mean, was, was put in by, from the resorts and stuff by a particular one. But how many resorts are there in the county that might come under?
Sorry, I just lost zoom. I do not have the exact number in front of me. I can bring that back, but I do believe there are at least five of them. And it could be more, but I don't know the exact number. I can have that number for you at the next meeting. But I know for at least, there's at least five of them, and they all vary in size and types of uses that exist at them.
Thank you, Andrew.
So going back to the smoke houses. I'm assuming since smoke houses all underline that that's not in the code at this point.
That's correct.
I'm just wondering, could, why are we not looking at industrial and commercial areas also?
And so what we are, what I brought before you guys is what they provided us. And so what I was hoping is maybe we can have a direction that we'd wish to kind of look at. And so if you, if the planning commission saw it fit, maybe expand into commercial districts or industrial districts. Or if you wanted to increase the size, or if you wanted to do X or Y. This is kind of the meeting, I think we were going to gauge that direction that you wanted us to go in. And we can then recraft these code they provided to meet the planning commission, planning commission's goals. So if we, we can look to see what other zones, if we want to just look to see expand into the commercial zones and industrial. I can go ahead and make that amendment for the next meeting so that we have at least that option is available for you guys to vote on and go from there.
Wouldn't they already be allowed in those zones?
So smoke houses are not in existing use. So they currently aren't allowed at all unless it's a home-based business. So this would be creating a new use essentially. And then we could give it as an option to anyone. And so.
Commercial smoking operations in Thurston County already?
They, I believe they're non-conforming.
Or meat processors? Is that meat in the code? What's the difference if it is?
I will have to get back to you. I don't have that in front of me right now. I, there is a butchering definition. But there's nothing specific to this specific use. So the smoking, curing, that type of practice. Potentially in the future, if we start to see kind of variations with different kind of food processing, it could be something where we create a specific use definition that it kind of encompasses all of it. The only issue that we may face if we do something like that is it may not be a practical use to allow within a residential district. So this is very specific because it already existed within the RR1 to 5. And so they, I think they're looking at it from the perspective of this is more like it's ag-related, but it's, it's something that you kind of see on these more rural farm-type areas. Sorry, it's not coming out clear.
Open this up to rural residential. There's no reason not to open it up to commercial and industrial areas. It just doesn't make any sense not to.
Well, I, I agree with that. I'm just, I'm just confused. I mean, I know of some like commercial fish smoking places that how do they get licensed? I mean, they must get licensed under some category right now in the commercial zones.
I, I will have to go back and look and see. I don't, I don't know of any specifically. So I can go and see and reach out to development services and see how exactly they are licensed. Most likely they are, they fall under one of the uses that currently exists that maybe it is related enough that they can utilize that use and allow that to take place. And so it could be just food processing or some sort of manufacturing that is allowed. And I can give you a more clear answer for the next meeting.
Yeah, I just opened up the code. I was looking at arterial commercial, one of our rural zoning districts, and I'm looking at the list of uses. And yeah, smoke houses doesn't, on its face, appear to be to fit, but there are, you know, a variety of stores, restaurants. There's dry cleaning. There's, you know, there's a whole bunch of facilities. So that is something that we should probably look into a little bit and to see whether it, it might still be wise to keep it as a special use. Just because if you think about a smokehouse and what is going on in the smoke. It might be something that we want to review under a special use, just to make sure the impacts are mitigated.
Well, there's something that we do here that would exempt them from ORCA requirements though, is there? I mean, they would still have to, they would still have to follow all the Olympic Region Clean Air Authority stuff.
I'm assuming that's absolutely true. That doesn't keep neighbors from having issues with citing these facilities though. So that's, that's obviously on the table for the commission. And like Andrew said, we're responding to an application with a really specific set. And then where you want to take it from there, we're open to receive and bring back that information and options.
Hey, this is Raoul here in section 34.3, paragraph A. Should that say resorts and the retreats facilities under 100 acres in size?
Yep, I caught that mistake after I submitted it to you guys. And I, I made the amendment already. So it should say under and not above. So.
I'm getting drawn out here.
Were there any other questions? That we had on any of these topics? So for the next meeting, I will bring back options for expanding into commercial and resident, commercial and industrial districts. I will bring back one that eliminates the employee count and a few other items that were just briefly brought up. And then I will bring this back in options so that we can then as a group vote yes or no, if we want to move forward with those and kind of keep the projects rolling. If that works. Okay. Have a nice night.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Kate.
Okay, anything else for Andrew or Caitlin? Hey, Jennifer, staff updates.
I don't have any staff updates. Well, maybe one. I mean, we're continuing to move forward with the SMP behind the scenes and bringing to you that clean draft on October 7th that, that will reflect or closer to a clean draft that reflects all of the changes. I think you are still using colored ink on that. I don't want to misspeak. But reflects all the changes and options that the planning commission has suggested to date, including some of the, the ones we hear a lot about from the public. For example, are there other options other than saying non-conforming and some opportunities there that we have to look at different language? That'll be brought forth as an option. And you know, the public continues to be very interested in this. We've updated the current information on the website as much as we can. You receive some public comment and, and a copy of the staff's response to that. So we're continuing to be very responsive to the public. I think everybody's just jonesing to get to the point where a public hearing draft is out. We have our virtual open house and we can have that Q and A period for a couple of weeks with the public. So we can really have them as educated as possible about what's in this draft. So then we can move to the public hearing. So that's, that's the goal and we're rolling along with that. And I know Andy's working really hard. So that's the only update really.
Jennifer, are we, hopefully we can get John Woodford satisfied with that he can find the right documents?
Yeah, Andy responded. We received that same email that you received from John Woodford as public comment tonight, that I think Polly sent to you this afternoon. Was responded to by Andy the next day and pointed him into the right direction of where to find the documents. And Andy, I don't believe, Andy said he didn't receive a subsequent response from Mr. Woodford. So I don't know if he's been satisfied or if he had additional questions, but staff responds real quickly to those types of inquiries and tries to point people in the right direction. And I think we're, I think there's a lot on that website that needs to get cleaned up. And we need to move to kind of the next phase when we're ready and put the most modern materials and all the fact sheets we've been making. And just, there's going to be a lot to help the folks understand what's in the draft coming out. And I kind of can't wait to show people, but we got to get there first.
Also, I still have, hold the same position relative to comments on anything past chapter 300. We have good information on 100 to 300 chapters in SMP, but after that, there's information needed from ecology before we can really work on it. We do, we're just duplicating our effort because we'll have to do it again.
Yeah. And that's the goal for the seventh is to come back with a draft that's updated with all of that kind of pending, those pending questions and information highlighted for you.
Okay, we'll have that enough time to, in our hands to actually review it before the meeting.
Well, usually we send you out your stuff a week in advance and that's the schedule we're maintaining. I think that extra time is needed by the planning commission. We can just, we'll hold a meeting on the 7th. We can hold another meeting on it on the 21st to wrap up whatever additional things you want to talk about. And we're just keep plugging along on the project. So we're excited to get to the open house, but we're not, you know, we're not ready yet. So we got to take the time that you need to make sure you're comfortable with the draft.
I know that, that Andy was saying that they're still planning on doing the open house online. And we don't have any control over COVID or any of the, you know, if we can open up facilities or not. I would still strongly encourage us having an open house in person. I think this is a really important one to do in person.
Well, we have to be mindful of the phase we're in and the opening. And I think that gatherings of that size right now would not be permitted in Thurston County. We could draw more folks than we could accommodate. So we're pursuing a virtual option at this time. But I hear you. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Jennifer? Okay, we'll move on to calendar. Is there anybody that is not available October 7? Okay, we'll move on to calendar. Is there anybody that is not available October 7? Okay, is there anybody that is not available on October 21st? Okay. That's all we got. So does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? 7:41, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.